A very full agenda tonight in both closed session and in open session. So we're going to limit this to 15 minutes, three minutes per speaker. So we will stop at 6:15 with the comments. So Mrs. Armstrong, who wants to go first?
First up we have Desiree Wise.
It is three minutes.
Hi Desiree.
Hi, good evening. Good evening, Mr. Fredis, Dr. Washer, members of the board. My name is Desiree Wise, CSCA negotiations chair. Is this on?
No, it's not. I think it is now.
Is it now?
Yeah.
Okay. Before you go into closed session, I wanted to make sure you were aware of four things tonight. Number one, lastly, last July when the start of the school year was pushed back by one week, CSCA asked Lodi Unified, what about our employees who work, whose work here decided instructional calendar? Their exact response was if your services are needed for the last five days of student instruction, CSCA would be allowed to work on a time card. What do you mean if our services are needed? We provide essential services and school districts cannot function without the classified staff. The increased work, number two, the increased workload coupled with the lack of respect in negotiations has led to CSCA members frustrations. The district, the district has known since July of 2000 that the classified staff would need to continue to work alongside teachers during the final week of school. Schools do not function without us, yet the district chose to ignore our employees and contribution we provide to ensure that schools will run smoothly and safely. When you look at our successful proposal, Mr. Mimi, you may think that CSCA is asking for a significant raise. I want to make sure that you are aware that this is the result of the increase in minimum wage. Minimum wage has increased by nearly $1 per year since 2016. For the last six years, Lodi Unified has chosen to not address the disparity in our salary schedule, which shows disrespect to the level of responsibility and education of each of our employees. Every time we've expressed concern, Lodi Unified told us they will pay minimum wage, but our current salary schedule still starts at $12.32 an hour, which is a couple dollars below minimum wage, which means employees who are newly hired go without earning a step in column for nearly four years. Lodi Unified has received $120 million in additional funding to mitigate the impact and effects of COVID on students and staff. That means all staff, that includes us. CSCA is here tonight to remind you, we matter too. CSCA is here tonight to make sure you know that we're looking for equity. These teacher, the teacher's COVID MOU will roughly cost Lodi Unified $11 million. Currently, your offer to CSCA for COVID fines will cost only $2.1 million. Where is the equity? Most of our employees have been out on the front lines working during this pandemic and deserve to be compensated. Our members ask that you show us how much we are appreciated by making us a priority and providing us, sorry, and providing us a decent proposal. Please provide direction to staff to bring this back to the table this week so we can iron out an agreement that is equitable and fair. If not, we will not bargain again until June 7th. And the comment that Mr. Mimi made outback that with this building, our CSCA is asking for double time for every employee, and that is true. We have all been impacted by COVID. The girls that work in purchasing are processing wrecks worth millions and millions of dollars. The girl that runs summer school is running how many different summer schools this year? Everybody has been impacted, not just parents, not just teachers, not just custodians, everybody.
Desiree, that's your three minutes. Thank you. Who's next, Mr. Washer?
Hi Randy, welcome to our meeting. Good evening, President Fredis, Board Member Superintendent Washer. My name is Randy, I'm the chapter president for CSCA here at Lodi Unified. I'm also a Skubash driver in transportation. As you know, most CSCA members continue reporting to work the entire past 14 months. Despite the raging pandemic in our community, we reported to work when safety supplies were short, mass, other PP, little or nonexistent. As a result, many of our members worked in conditions that caused them to expose, to be exposed and continue up to this day to work in conditions that expose them to virus on a daily basis. Right now, over one quarter of the weekly reported infections are from school-aged children. We receive reports each day from the district safety coordinator on multiple sites in the district where exposures are occurring. All of our classified employees are suffering from traumatic stress caused by subjected to working in these conditions, and yet we are treated in negotiations as if our sacrifices are no value to the district. We would like to know if this is being directed by you, the members of the board, while we support other educators receiving funds meant to provide from a fair contract and additional pay for added COVID duties. We have not received the same offer. Our members are here tonight to inform you once again that this is a classified service who has kept our students and their community fed, kept our classrooms, restrooms clean, disinfected each classroom ever, every single day, transported students safely even when the students are ill with COVID-19, and continued engaging them with the assistance of the technology department. In-person and through-distance learning for the last 14 months, our workflows have increased three to fourfold. You have or will be hearing from the same of them tonight, and yet if you are not aware, please be informed the district is offering us less than one-fifth of what you have granted the teachers for COVID effects and impacts. We are depending on you to trust us with the dignity and respect. Please direct your representatives to provide us a fair share equitable proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy.
Next we have Chris Beach.
Hi Chris.
Good evening, Dr. Washer, board. My name is Chris Beach, and I am one of your kitchen workers. I manage Clermont Elementary. Let me tell you a bit of what we've gone through this last year. We did not have the option to work from home. Right from the beginning, we had been on the front line. We put ourselves out there and at risk to keep the children fed. In the last 58 workdays, there have been 66 people that have tested positive for COVID on our campuses. We were constantly in contact with the public serving our food. Our menus have changed often because suppliers run out of items. We learned new ways to do things, new ways to serve food, and adapt on the fly. We served in the burning hot sun and the pouring rain. We did what had to be done to take care of our kids. How many of you have put yourselves at risk? My guess is not many. We worked with you when it looked like the government would give money to schools to reopen. We were told we would get a part of it. That plan fell through, but the government made other plans and gave you money for it. They gave you more than you expected to get. It was money to get ready for in-person instruction and to help employees that have done so much for you and our children under extreme circumstances. And what did you give your classified employees? A slap in the face. We have bent over backwards, we deliver food to classrooms daily. We prepackaged everything, we followed more strict health and safety rules than we ever had before. We work at poverty late wages, and this is what you offer us, scraps, pennies on the dollar compared to what you've offered other groups. Other districts around us have shown that they appreciate their workers by offering fair compensation for all the services rendered, not treating their classified like second-class workers. That is why you can't find workers to work in this district. You have over 100 vacancies in classified and growing. They are going where they are shown how much they are appreciated. Do what is right and offer us fair compensation. It is time for you to be there for us as we have been there for you this last year.
Very nice, thank you, Chris. Next?
Next we have Brenda Kierowicz.
Hi Brenda.
Good evening.
Welcome to our meeting.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm one of the fun-sized people. My name is Brenda Marark, and I've been a teacher in the district for 15 years. Superintendent in the board, I have logged on to listen to many board meetings over the course of the pandemic. Repeatedly, I have heard you congratulating each other for all the work you have done. Frankly, I feel you should be ashamed of yourselves. There is a saying that goes, "A lack of planning on your part does not constitute an emergency on my part." There has been tremendous lack of planning on behalf of the district even though you are completely aware of what's to come. Next week is just the latest example. The extra week was bargained with Leah early in the year. However, you neglected to bargain with the other critical bargaining units. To tell these units that they can just come in for a time card is a slap in the face. In fact, one of our critical CSCA members was told by their supervisor that it's not for her, it's for the kids. That is extremely insulting. CSCA members are being asked to cross their job descriptions to fill in for members that will not be here. Not one board member superintendent supervisor was out during the lockdown in the extreme heat and smoke-filled air preparing and passing out food to our families, coming into contact with hundreds of people. Not one has stepped up on campus to fulfill the immense extra duties that have been put on all of the staff. Yet you continue to feel pride in your handling of everything. All of your staff has the weight of this work on their shoulders. CSCA and LPPA deserve the MOU and COLA. They deserve to be compensated for all of the COVID hazard duties that they have performed. They deserve respect. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Who's next?
Next we have Sherry, I believe it says Kelly.
Hi Sherry.
Hi, hello, hello, thank you for listening to me. I am Sherry Kelly. I work for Lockford School in Live Oak Elementary as the library media system. I'd like to say that when this pandemic happened, we were called in to help get all of the Chromebooks, all of the textbooks, everything sent out to each of the students. And that's what we did. Classified was the only ones that showed up to give out these Chromebooks at these schools that I work for and the principal. So we were out there amongst the heaviest time of this pandemic with our lives at stake handing these out scared that we were going to get it also. But we stuck it out because of the sake of our children, the children of Lodi Unified School District. Now, as it came by throughout the time on distant learning, the kitchen staff worked the hardest they have ever worked. And classified from all over the school ran in to help this kitchen staff because they could not do it by themselves. It was so much work for them to do, and the packaging, and setting it out so that way the parents and the children can come pick it up. Also, we also had problems with the Chromebooks, making sure that every child had a Chromebook. And we were out there, all classified were out there to help these students with problems with Chromebooks, making sure they have hotspots. And we were dealing with the parents one-on-one. So how you can say that we do not deserve our fair share hurts my heart because I care so much for these kids, I put my own health, and so did every single classified staff out there, put their health on risk for the children of Lodi Unified School District who we love and care for deeply. We consider these children as our own children, and they are, by God, my children. And I have 1,400 children that I take care of on a weekly basis, and every single child in the Lodi School District is my child, and I know who they are. Please, respect us for the fact of all of our love. We are not here, obviously, not for the money, but it sure would be nice to have your recognition and give us what we do deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry. Anyone else?
Yes, next is Kimberly Johnson.
Hi Kimberly.
Hello. Hi Kimberly, I work in transportation. I was here a few weeks ago, nice to see you all. Thank you for listening to me.
You're welcome.
Once again, I'll say we are here to petition you to bring satisfactory equity to our unit members for our fair share. We are quality workers that really, how can I say, don't feel a fair handshake in this at all. We depend on you to make it moral for all of our staff. I mean, this is your legacy right now, wouldn't you want it to be principled? Every operation of service that I encounter in the district is in dismay. We need you because you have the force to restore it. Kindly reconsider. We all take to heart our duties above and beyond, and continue every day to do our best with integrity. Please hear us. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, unfortunately, that's all the time we have this evening. We're past the 15-man mark, so the board will be adjourning to closed session.
You know, there's one thing.
Yeah. There's a lot of things to me. Everything that's been like.
Four, he has 30 years.
But we got him.
Yeah. Yeah. I saw something on the court.
That's so good.
That's nice. That's your best.
Sorry.
You sounded good.
You're so good.
You know, now it's not bad. So good.
You're down again. Go ahead and be a chair.
You know what, you did a lot of things wrong. A lot of things wrong down here. You got a big hint in that computer.
Yeah.
Jim, the future's actually right there.
What did you do? Go back to join me.
All right.
There you go.
Jamie, how's it looking?
I think I need some people.
Are you guys doing good?
You were trying to test us.
You were trying to test us.
Sure. There you go.
You're a good one. You were trying to test us.
You were trying to test us.
Sure. There is a man in here called. Very slow. Really? But just like anything.
I just want to write off.
Who's email him?
See?
You.
Yeah. You're a punk.
You don't bend that much.
You're taking so long, so hold on.
I don't count at all.
We have student reps.
Virtual. They're virtual.
Do you guys need virtuals?
Two virtuals. And it's their last meeting.
Oh, there you are.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
Welcome, everybody, to our first meeting on June, which is on the first day of June, which is a very good time to have a first meeting. We see that all board members are present. We appreciate you waiting for us. We had just a few items on the closed session agenda that worked out, and we apologize for running a little bit late, but we thank you again for your patience. Ms. Knack said, could you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please, sir?
Salute. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very nice, Ms. Knack said. Thank you very much. Role call, we have all seven board members are present in person. We are also joined by our student representatives. We have Anne McLeodville from Bear Creek High School. Anne, are you out there somewhere? Maybe so. And we also have Haley Escorpiso from McNair High School. Both seniors, both graduating next year. We are looking forward to seeing both of you at graduation. Thank you very much. As always, we are joined by the executive assistants of the board. Ms. Armstrong, very nice to have you here tonight. And our IT technician extraordinaire, Andrew is being assisted by Michael. Thank you, Andrew, for helping us get through this meeting tonight. Report out from closed session. An appointment of elementary principal, Mr. Neely motioned, and Ms. McFarland second, and the board approved the appointment of Sonia Renholm as elementary principal effective 21-22 school year, location to be determined by the vote of seven to zero. Also, Mr. Porter motioned, and Mr. Heverly second, and the board approved the appointment of Shontae Porter as elementary principal effective 20-21-22 school year, location to be determined by the vote of seven to zero. Also, Mr. Nava motioned, and Mr. Knack said second, and the board approved the placement of 20-20-21 non-public school new student number 68 by the vote of seven to zero. And Mr. Heverly motioned, and Mr. Porter second, and the board approved the placement of 20-20-21 non-public school new student number 69 by the vote of seven to zero. And that's all reported from closed session. We have two public hearings tonight, so I declare the local control and accountability plan public hearing open. Dr. Sully?
Evening, President Freitas, Dr. Wash, and members of the board. Tonight is on the agenda for public comments, the LCAP or LCFF funding. The three pages which are on the attachment of 138 pages summarize the funding in picture format, let's see, pie charts related to the LCAP, or the district budget, and then the LCAP funding, which consists of our ADA for our regular, our general population, and also the supplemental and concentration students who are also unduplicated students, the low-income English learner foster and homeless youth, which we provide, are provided and a little extra funding for. And subsequent to those picture graphs showing how we spent that and allocated that money is the nitty-gritty of all the actions that are in the LCAP. I don't know that I want to cover all that today, so I'm just here to be to answer any questions that the public may have.
Very nice. Thank you, Dr. Sully. Any comments from the board? Comments from the public?
There's no virtual.
Thank you, Ms. Armstrong. And with that, I will declare this public hearing to be closed.
the low-income English learner foster and homeless youth, which we provide, are provided and a little extra funding for. And subsequent to those picture graphs showing how we spent that and allocated that money is the nitty-gritty of all the actions that are in the LCAP. I don't know that I want to cover all that today, so I'm just here happy to answer any questions that the public may have.
Very nice. Thank you, Dr. Sully. Any comments from the board? Comments from the public?
There is no virtual.
Thank you, Ms. Armstrong. And with that, I will declare this public hearing to be closed. And I will now declare open the budget hearing for the 2021-22 budget adoption. The public hearing is now open. Mr. Khan.
Thank you, President Freitas, members of the board. Dr. Washer, before the board is a first presentation for public review of the 21-22 budget. A few comments. The 5.07% COLA announced it may revise is included in this budget. There is only one bargaining unit settlement included in this budget, so there are several more to also add to the expenditure levels. But we'd be happy to answer any questions from the public at this time.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Khan. Any comments from the board? Comments from the public? Virtual call. And seeing none, I will then declare this budget adoption public hearing closed. What's the timeframe for this, Mr. Khan?
For the budget?
Yes.
We must have it adopted by the end of June in Two County, first day or two of July.
So we will be seeing this?
June 15.
Very nice. That's our next regular board meeting. Is that correct?
Yes.
Good. Thank you. Superintendent Tens report. Dr. Washer.
Thank you, Mr. Freitas, members of the board. While we are happy to learn that San Joaquin County is officially in the orange tier. We know that tiers are going to be going away soon, but it's good to know that our county finally reached that level. Also, want to let you know in the spirit of past celebrations that today is Mr. Khan's birthday. Happy birthday to Mr. Khan.
I think there is another tradition that goes along with wishing him happy birthday.
Would you like to start, Mr. Freitas?
Of course not, since it is your report. To somehow step on your toes and steal your thunder.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Mr. Khan. Happy birthday to you.
We'll do better on your next one.
Still practicing.
Very nice. That's perfect.
Would like to acknowledge Millswood Middle School. Millswood Schools' check-in and checkout program utilizes cellphone connection between students and school staff. And this was featured in the recent issue of the San Joaquin County Office of Education's Outlook magazine, which we all received. A team of staff members at the school volunteered to check in with a group of students twice a day to help forge a connection to the school and reach students who might need a little extra motivation. The program is in its third year after the school put it into action following a PDIS training. And Vice Principal Shontae Shorter says, "We have kids who just need a smile in the morning and somebody to say, 'We are glad you are here.'" So congratulations to Millswood for being recognized in the county's magazine. Also like to acknowledge the City of Lodi Earth Day poster contest. The City of Lodi recently sponsored the poster contest. Forty-nine Lodi Unified students entered from four of our schools. There's a list of contest winners up there, if you can see that. And the Best of Show artwork submitted by Annabelle Vargas, eighth grader at Joe Serna Jr. Charter School. Congratulations to Annabelle, and thank you to all the teachers who helped students participate in this. The annual publication of the newspaper, The Colony Current, hopefully you all received that. That's becoming a fun feature for Lodi Unified. Looks like that. Have you each been given a copy? It contains news articles written by Lodi Unified students. We want to thank Kathy Grant, City of Lodi watershed coordinator who assists with coordination of student writers, printing and distribution of the publication each year. Thank you to the teachers and students who took part in the project, the Lodi News Sentinel for their assistance, and the Doc Kids Foundation for funding the project, which is now in its eighth year. We have some pictures there from Ms. Johnson's class at Vine Wood Elementary School. Ms. Johnson noted that only two of her students had ever held a newspaper before. Some of us are getting old. So this is exciting for them. So thank you. Want to just remind you that, and remind our public that our next board meeting will be in-person only. So there will be no virtual comments at that point. Also want to remind everyone that I know that there are lots of changes out there in progress in different areas with the health pandemic and changes coming up, June 15th with the elimination of the tier system and some restrictions lifted. We still follow California Department of Public Health and our own county health department. And even after June 15th, the school guidance does not go away. So some of those lifting of restrictions do not apply to schools. I just want to make sure everyone is aware that that document, the industry guidance for schools, is one of the few that is staying in place. Some of them are being eliminated, but not the guidance for schools. So we still must follow that guidance document. We understand that there may be some changes in that early fall, but at this point, none of that has changed. Thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Well, absolutely, Ms. Armstrong. Dr. Washer, you said we're going to orange tier. What impact does that have on the district? How are we able to loosen up things somehow?
The orange tier lessens the restrictions for capacity limits. So instead of, I think, 25%, I think it goes to 33%. So more folks can be in one space at the same time. The other things, as I said, you know, that are going to be lifted do not apply to schools, such as masks, distancing, those kinds of things. There is some changes with vaccinated persons and lifting of restrictions there, but again, we are following still the school guidance.
Thank you. Dr. Washer, do you have a crystal ball? What on when we go after school in the fall, we what's here? Are we going to be wearing masks? So are you going to be wearing masks yet?
Well, I have to say personally, I certainly hope not. And I'm hopeful that the spacing guidance will either change or be eliminated. And that may be something that is being, that will be considered as a change in terms of the school guidance, or those two elements. But over the summer, we are still bound by that.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, we'll have something else. Ms. Porter.
Yeah, I have a quick question, Dr. Washer. Does this affect graduation at all?
Mr. Porter, members of the board, it does in terms of capacity and how we can have more folks in there. And we have, we were anticipating this. And when we got the week's credit worth of orange, we started moving in that direction already. So schools have already made those changes.
Oh, very good. Thank you.
Very, very nice. And yes, Ms. Heverly.
The plan that we are still held under is a state-guided by plan.
Correct.
So in order for us to change, we have to have the county and the state change their rules.
Correct.
Now, I know you're in contact weekly with county health and the other superintendents in the county and so forth. Has anybody talked about? Have you heard that this might be changing so that we can loosen up?
I did hear that the school guidance was going to be reviewed, and the estimated timeline was early fall. So September, October, which doesn't help us for summer school and doesn't help us because we start so early. That, then that could change between now and then as well. But that's, at least, that's what we've heard so far at this point.
Thank you.
Well, it's really nice that we're in the orange tier for the 14 remaining days before the tiers end on the 15th.
Let's check that goal, right?
Yes. All right. And speaking of graduations, we have two people that will be graduating from Lodi Unified next week. We have Emma Glanville from Bear Creek High School and Haley Escorpisso from McNair High School. They are our student reps, and we're very excited to have them one last time to give their presentations. We have neither of them on the line just yet. Andrew?
Emma is online. She's currently self-interne-
Okay, Emma. Looks like you get to go first. Emma, how are things at Bear Creek High School?
Are you, uh, am I in here?
Not anymore.
Uh, sorry, my phone was being really weird. It wasn't letting me unmute myself because I think that I was trying to click on it. I think it was frozen.
Very good. How you doing, Emma?
Okay. I'm good. How are you guys?
Very good. Happy to be here.
That's good. I'm glad to hear. Okay. So I have my board report. To start off, we've been doing a lot of activities lately. The in-person students, as well as the distance learning students, but the in-person students predominantly have been putting in a lot of hard work, like daily, to make in-person activities happen for both distance learning students and in-person students. So to start, they carried out an international showcase, and it was also put on live stream and video for people who were able to attend to see. They planned a prom, and it was held in the school's May Night Side Courtyard. It was for mostly seniors, but seniors were allowed to bring a junior date. There was a dance floor, a DJ. There were different food vendors. Like we had shaved ice. We had foba. We had a bunch of different water tables for students. And we also had tables for people to sit at, like all around the courtyard. The class is also working on a goodbye rally. It's going to take place this last Thursday for the seniors. It's just basically a rally with a class dance, and there's a couple other like little games for people to play. But we're hosting it after school for both distance learning students and in-person students. And everybody has to be safely socially distanced with masks on. And then, as well as those things, our senior class president has been working really hard with senior parents to organize a mix of sober grad night, senior sunset. And that's going to be on this Sunday. And next year's ASP student government position holders have already been announced. That was like three weeks ago. It was really good. The interviews went really well. And graduation practices are being planned as well. And then our admin has been sending out weekly, or multiple times a week, they've been sending out reminders to seniors about their calendar changes, as well as dates for graduation, returning books, doing graduation practices. And we successfully hosted international, our senior prom, and soon to be a goodbye rally. And then I just had, I wanted to shout out the entire student government class at my school, as well as the admin and Ms. Jessica Anderson, for the tremendous amount of work they put in this last quarter to make it fun for everybody so that their last quarter of this year was memorable and they take something with them into the summer. But that is what I have to my report.
Emma, very nice job. I'm sure Mr. Nava wants to ask you about that baseball team.
Yes. Emma, how about that baseball team?
Um, I have not got any direct updates on our baseball team, but if you wanted me to, I could definitely message our athletic director and see how they're doing because he has all the stats and get back to you on that.
Oh, yeah. Don't worry. I think Mr. Nava has it for you.
Wonderful.
Your season has ended already, but Bear Creek has a 16-0 winning streak in baseball, which is-
I was going to say, they're probably doing, they're probably doing great or did great when they did for a season.
It's very difficult in baseball to go that route because it's a tough sport. But they lost two games in preseason, but they're, they're on a roll. And I understand that most of the team members are coming back for next year. That's the report.
Yep. It should be a great next season, too.
Thank you.
Well, that's a great accomplishment, and that's a very nice report, Emma. Thank you very much. Unfortunately, the team that they beat in their last game was McNair High School in the Eight Mile Road. But Haley, you have a lot of good things to tell us about McNair. Is that right?
All right. Well, that last part, it was a little hard to hear.
Okay. Tell us what's going on. What's the good news for McNair?
Oh, yes, of course. Um, okay. So first off, thanking Mr. Freitas and members of the board. For updates from McNair, there are some activities and programs that have been happening the last few weeks. Our link crew communication and the dev are, we're working on our last eagle new segment of the year, which will probably be posted really soon on our social medias. And we've also had many of our clubs, like NHS and Iraq, who have all held their closing ceremonies, as well as electing new officers for the upcoming school year. And then for updates from our student government, we've held our, our new student government council for the 2021-22 school year. And, well, um, sorry. I wanted to say a huge congrats to Marissa Duterte, who will be your next ASB president for the upcoming year. I'm really proud of her. She had a lot of experience from leadership in student government, and I look forward to seeing her grow as an individual. And also, for events this weekend, we will be hosting our senior season finale. And it's a whole weekend of events. So this Saturday, we will hold our first senior formal since the pandemic that we decided to call the Night of Nights, where there will be many activities, like games, food, and dancing. And then on Sunday, the sixth, will be our, kind of like our senior sunset and movie night event that we call the Senior Blockbuster, where students will be able to get together one last time before we graduate. And then, of course, on Monday, the seventh is our graduation day. And we also decided to give it a little name called the Last One. But that's pretty much it for McNair.
Oh, but wait, there's more. Haley, Mr. Nava wants to ask you about that girls varsity basketball team. Don't you?
I understand they're doing really well. Can you tell us about it?
Um, I heard that they were doing good as well, but I'm not that involved, so I'm not too sure.
Well, if you see anyone on the girls varsity basketball team, congratulate them because they are the league champions, which is absolutely amazing.
I heard they got a first banner as well.
They what?
They got us one of our banners, too.
You're going to get a banner in the gym, and they're going to be recognized forever. So that's quite an accomplishment, and what a great team. So way to go with that. Also, were you able to participate in the vaccination clinic on Friday afternoon?
No, I wasn't able to go, but I, I heard that it went really well.
Yes. McNair partnered with Lodi Unified and Adventist Health, and they had a walk-in clinic on Friday afternoon. Anybody who wanted to come by, age 12 and older, we got vaccinated. And parents, kids, the whole works. And they're already coming back in three weeks to get your second shot. And also, if you didn't get a chance to get your first shot, please come and take advantage of that. So way to go, Haley, and way to go, Emma. But wait, there's also more on that. We, if you were here, we would be presenting you with these certificates. Well. Yes. That we have for you. For your recognition, that Mr. Porter and Vice President McFarland are showing you, these certificates show our appreciation for you telling us about your daily lives of students and the input of what's going on with it. Also, we have your nameplates somewhere, and those will also be included for you. We hope that you do not put them in some dorm room, but once in a while that you do, let us know how things are going and drop in. Emma, would you like to tell us what it looks like for you after graduation now? It's a finicky phone.
Sorry, just unmuted me. Um, after I graduate, I'm going to Delta College. Um, I want to go into something along the lines of marketing. Uh, not a hundred percent sure on the details yet, but going to Delta for two years and then I wanna transfer somewhere, probably still in California, but that's what I have for now.
That's really exciting. And, uh, Haley, what are your plans now?
Um, I also plan to go to Delta for a few years to get my general end then, and then transfer somewhere in SoCal. And probably major in business administration so that I can work towards my goal of becoming a, um... Oh my gosh, I forgot what it's called. Becoming a, a event coordinator for Dickey.
Very nice, how, how exciting. All right, I'm sure the, uh, other members of the board would also like to, uh, share their appreciation. Mr. Everly?
Yes, as always, the student representatives give us a wonderful perspective of what's going on on the ground out there in the school sites, and, uh, it's a wonderful thing. And so, we really do seriously appreciate the efforts that you, uh, spend your time with us and give us information of the school happenings. It's been an extremely difficult year, so we do appreciate all your efforts, uh, in keeping us informed. Thank you so much, good luck in your future.
Thank you, Mr. Everly. Other comments from the board? Mr. Knack said?
So, event coordinator for Disney, that sounds really exciting. So, let us know how, how it goes.
Uh, that's coming from someone who's written two books on Disneyland?
Just one.
Just one, so, you'll, you'll have to, uh, tell them that you know Mr. Knack said, and I'm sure that went up on the internet. Very nice, well, uh, we see, we'll see you at your graduations next Tuesday and Wednesday. We're very excited, uh, for you, and, uh, thank you very much for being our student members. Okay, moving on with the agenda, we have comments from the public. Uh, twenty-minute time period has been set aside for the public to address the board on items not listed on the agenda. Each public speaker shall limit his or her comments to three minutes. Due to restrictions imposed by the California Brown Act regarding discussing topics that are not on the agenda, board members may not engage in dialogue about the issue. Mrs. Armstrong, do we have anybody who wishes to address us for public comment?
Yes, we have two in person, um, we have Jessica Kenter.
And how many total do we have?
Uh, two in person and now, uh, virtually there's four.
Vir- virtual four and two in person, so six, so we can go three minutes each. All right, very good. And I believe it's Jessica?
Yes, sir.
Hi, Jessica.
Howdy, howdy. Thank you, Mr. Freitas, Dr. Washer, members of the board. I'm excited to see more finalized agreements with bargaining units coming across the agendas, and I am hopeful that we will soon see ones for CSEA. I just wanted to take a moment to remind you that the COVID MOU is not the only agreement we're waiting on. We're currently two calendar days, or seven school days, or twenty-one days for our twelve-month employees away from the end of the school year, which we have now worked without a contract. So, we're also waiting on our COVID MOU, but more importantly, for me personally, we don't have an active contract either. I just wanted to make sure you hadn't forgotten that. A big piece of our contract needs to include our salary. Currently, minimum wage is fourteen dollars an hour. We have six ranges of our salary schedule that are below minimum wage. Those ranges account for two-hundred-and-eighty-two filled contracts of our employees. Once January first of 2022 comes along, the minimum wage is gonna move to fifteen dollars an hour. At that point, three more of our ranges of our salary schedule will move under the minimum wage cap, which will account for nine ranges of our salary schedule, or twenty percent. Twenty percent of our salary schedule is gonna be below minimum wage come January first. But more importantly than the twenty percent of our salary schedule, that twenty percent accounts for seven-hundred-and-thirty-one contracts of CSEA employees. That's forty-one percent of all of the CSEA contracts in the district are gonna be below minimum wage. It's a hard pill to swallow, forty-one percent of your union members will have contracts that start below minimum wage. I just want you to think about that and keep that at the front of your mind and realize we are looking for a contract, too. It's not just the COVID MOU, it's contract, it's fair wages. I've now been in the district nine years. When I came into the district nine years ago, my eight-hour position at a thirty-five, which is six paces higher than what we're talking about here, my salary did not meet what I was making at Starbucks before I came here. At a thirty-five, seven steps higher than the people we're talking about here, was still less than what I had been making at Starbucks before I came here eight years ago. We can do better, we need to do better for our employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica.
Next, we have Michelle Rupi.
Hi, Michelle, welcome to our meeting.
Hi, thank you. Hi, I'm here representing the Let Them Breathe statewide group that has formed, to advocate for our children, um, across the state, but I am heading the group here in Lodi. And so, I am here tonight on behalf of the Let Them Breathe group to ask, plead, beg, demand that each and every one of you would advocate for our children in Lodi. As we just heard, the CDPH, um, is at this moment not planning on lifting the mask mandate for our children for this one. Anybody that has any control or power in this city stood up to our state. I would ask that you would push, request and demand, as we the parents are, our state health department to lift the mask mandate for all the children in our schools, vaccinated or not, no discrimination. As simple as masks are not required, they are a choice. I just listened to Dr. Mary McBride, a very neutral doctor. She believes in vaccinations, but clearly states, children do not need masks or a vaccine. The science does not support these mandates. She further stated, acting out, all those rates are increasing, COVID is not. This is a problem, this is a bigger problem than COVID. Um, what word am I here? Um, and it's proving that we are heading into another crisis, which we all want to avoid, and I'm sure you guys do, too. And this crisis is a mental health crisis in our youth. It's saddening, it's sickening. So, when we hold our kids hostage, that's not rooted on science and evidence, we will have big costs to their emotional health and safety. Many of us have been put in a position to live by the standards of the most frightened individuals. That's just not fair. Others who are not frightened should not have to cover their children's faces. Fear should not be in the driver's seat, fear must be calibrated to the facts. Our children should not be masked at school anymore, so please help Let Them Breathe. Please help us, please help us fight the state. We are in the process of working with lawyers and we are pushing really hard, and if we could have your support, it would, it could change the future for our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Any other, uh, in public, public comments? Looks like none, all right, our virtual comments.
First up, we have Darcy Tease, she did not give a last name.
Hi, Darcy.
She's on the phone.
Okay.
Next up is Lisa Wilken.
Hi, Lisa.
Okay. Good evening, uh, Dr. Washer and members of the board. Thank you for giving me this time to speak. I listened to many of the comments before closed session, and I am just disappointed that this, this board in this district is showing such disrespect to our CSEA members. You knew that in July of last year, that you were extending the school year for five days, but haven't acted and, uh, have not acted and still have not acted on giving them a fair contract for those five additional days. These people are essential to our school. We need to have our cafeteria workers, our bus drivers, our attendance clerks, our custodians, they are all essential to making a school run. And by not acknowledging that they are essential and not acting on, on giving them an extended, um, contract like you did to the, the teachers and the administrators, is just shows such a lack of foresight and, uh, disrespect, um, for their jobs. You cannot discount what these people do. To hear just now that forty-one percent of these members are gonna be, um, paid less than minimum wage is, is appalling, and I don't know how it's even legal. So, I'm asking you that before their contract ends this Friday, that you settle with them, because if they are not there, if we don't have kids to bus, um, to get our, if we don't have bus drivers to get our kids to school, these kids aren't gonna be able to come to school, what are we supposed to do? Are we gonna have them go distance? Is that your intent? That needs to be made public, it is, because parents don't know about that. So, please think about what you are doing, show some true leadership, and give these people a fair contract today. It should have been done months ago, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Next?
Next is Timothy Brandon.
Timothy?
Timothy.
Timothy, Timothy. Are you there?
Timothy is currently self-referenced.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Loud and clear.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, board members, for letting me speak tonight, um, and superintendent. First, I'd like to say that all CSEA members are important. We are essential for having this school, for making this school district and the schools run properly, and we deserve our fair share and respect from you. Secondly, I'd like to, for you to really think about how the way you are treating the CSEA members, it does hurt our students, it really does. And I know I heard, overheard a board, board member earlier this evening saying, think about the students. Well, we are thinking about the students, but you guys aren't thinking about us or the students. Because I don't know, you have to realize that we all are there to help the students. We all care about those students. And it's a safety concern, because I'm a parent, I work in a SDC preschool classroom, and there are safety concerns because there are not enough parents to help in the classroom or for us to even call out sick. We can't call out sick because there's no one to go sub. The, the only thing I can think of, the reason why we are not able to fill those positions and hire new people and get the subs that we need to help us, is because other districts around us are paying a fair share to the CSEA workers that they have. So, I'd like you to really think about that. And think about, because next week, are you guys gonna go to the classroom and help out with all the special needs classrooms when the parents aren't there? And, you know, I invited you, the last time I spoke to you, I didn't want you guys to come and work a day in our classroom to see what it's like, to see how unsafe it is not having enough staff. And, you know, we will, we're only asking for our fair share. I don't understand why there's a problem with that, I'm not sure, but I do feel disrespected. And I feel like you guys think of us as like little ants that you could just step on all over the place and think that we're gonna give in just because we do care about our students. And then, lastly, I'd like you guys to remember that we're gonna remember all of you board members when it's time for your reelection. So, if you would like to be reelected, please show us some respect, show us that you care about us, and give us our contract. Thank you.
Thank you. What else do we have, Mrs. Armstrong?
Next, we have Kimberly Freebird.
Hi, Kimberly.
Good evening, President Freitas, members of the board, Superintendent Washer. I'd like to start off by saying, if my memory serves me correctly, starting a meeting late is a Brown Act violation, and it's also extremely rude to all the people who are sitting there waiting. I come to you tonight in support of a fair contract for the CSEA members. The calendar change was done last July, so for the life of me, I cannot understand why they weren't negotiated with at that time like your other staff members were. You continue to disrespect the people in which you serve. You ignore the opinions of staff and parents by continuing to talk about extending the school year and adding minutes to the school day. It's still on page three of the grant proposal from the last meeting. You sent out a text earlier today saying that you're not voting on adding to the school year, but rumors are always have some truth to them. Remember, you were elected to serve the people of the Lodi Unified. That means listening, reading emails, being respectful of their time and hard work. No bargaining bodies should have to fight so hard to get what they deserve, earned and trying to guilt trip them is reprehensible behavior. Thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly. And, Mrs. Armstrong?
No further comments.
No further comments, all right, thank you everyone for your comments tonight from the public. Um, I'm really gonna miss when we don't have the virtual comments on the fifteenth, uh, the sixteenth, so, anyhow. Uh, we'll have to bring them back once in a while. Dr. Washer, what are we gonna do with these owls? Is there gonna be a sale on them, or?
Uh, Mr. Freitas, I'm sure that they will be, um, useful in some way, somehow, and our teachers will...
We'll put them in a time capsule, exactly, right? So, very, very nice, people say, hey, what's that newspaper, what's that owl? All right. Moving on with our agenda, we have consent agenda A, routine business. Do any members of the board wish to pull any items on consent agenda A? Any members of the public wish to, uh, pull any items on consent agenda A? Mrs. Armstrong?
No, virtual.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve routine agenda A.
Thank you, Mr. Nava, for your motion, thank you, Vice President McFarland, for your second. Go ahead, call for the vote, student vote? Students would like to vote, I.
Yeah, not as broad as it looks like.
Very good. It is, uh, it's kind of...
Haley, Haley, it's still on.
What about Haley? You got approved consent agenda A and all these great things on here, all eighteen wonderful items? Haley? Uh, no comments from the public, we'll go ahead and call for our vote. That was easier. And Consent Agenda A passes seven zero. Thank you, board. Moving on to Consent Agenda B Student Discipline Cases. Can I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve Consent Agenda B Student Discipline Cases.
Thank you, Mr. Navah, for your motion. Thank you, Vice President McFarland, for your second. Students do not vote on this matter. No comments from the public. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and call for the vote. Consent Agenda B Student Discipline Cases passes seven zero. Other action items. We have a declaration need for fully qualified educators. Mr. McIllegan?
Mr. President, this is our annual guesstimate as to how many we'll need for the next year. We have to file it each year, so you've seen this before.
Very nice, thank you, Mr. McIllegan. Comments from the board? Comments from the public?
Second.
We have a motion for, wishes of the board. Mr. Everly moves. Mr. Navah, second. We go ahead and call for the vote. And the Declaration Need passes seven zero. How many of these action items we got? Eight. That must be, is that some type of record?
Yeah, I think so this year anyway.
It's an easy record.
It's an easy record, all right. We'll see. Resolute, Item OAI two, Resolution 2021-35, Hiring of Short Term Classified Employees. Mr. McIllegan?
Mr. President, this again is also a routine item we bring to you each year in June to clear the way in case we need to hire some short term employees during the course of the next school year.
Thank you, Mr. McIllegan. Comments from the board? Comments from the public?
Chairman, I move we approve Resolution 2021-35.
Mr. Navah, I thank you for that motion. I'm going to hold up on the second. We have one comment from the public.
We have one. Kyle Hardman.
Hi Kyle.
Kyle is currently self-interne-
Did you hear that Kyle? There, there you go. Sounds good.
Okay. So I just wanted to report to you that last Friday when we saw this item on the agenda, that I sent a message to the superintendent and to the President Freitas regarding the unlawful conduct that you are considering by approving this resolution right now. It is actually, we demanded that you cease this unlawful action. CSEA is the exclusive representative for all classified employees in the district. And the positions you are proposing to create here do not follow the definition of short term employees as found in Education 45103. I also advise you that CSEA will not tolerate these proposed district actions to transfer out bargaining unit work to other newly created positions. And that failure to pull this or defeat this in the board action tonight would be a violation of the Employment Relations Act, the Education Code, and the current collective bargaining agreement that we have, which declares that CSEA is the exclusive representative of all classified employees. Thank you.
Thank you Kyle for bringing that to our attention. Mr. Navah, you have made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Neely, for a second. Go ahead and no further comments. We will call for the vote. And the item passes six one with one opposed. Mr. Porter. Moving on to Item OAI three, Resolution 2021-36, COPS School Violence Prevention Program Grant Resolution. Mr. Khan?
Thank you, President Freitas, members of the board. Dr. Washer, before the board is a resolution to allow staff to pursue the COPS grant funding. Tomorrow cabinet will consider two options to present to the board once this application is filed. They will be either for access control systems or cell phones. Board may recall that we've applied for this grant every single year. Thus far, we haven't gotten it, but we're always hopeful.
Well, you might have to use some of that birthday charm magic on that grant application. Very nice. Other comments from the board? Comments from the public? Wishes of the board? Thank you, Mr. Everly, for your motion. Thank you, Ms. McFarland, Vice President McFarland, for your second. Call for the vote. And Item OAI three passes seven zero. Item OAI four, Resolution 2021-37, Port of Education of Lodi Unified School District, Prescribing the Terms and Подraising the Issuance of the Election Series 2016 Bonds, 2021 Bonds. Mr. Khan?
Thank you, President Freitas, members of the board. Dr. Washer, this resolution, with this resolution, the board resolves to establish certain technical aspects of issuing bonds. Ms. Juarez and her staff are actively pursuing a bond sale at the end of this month. And in the measure you indenture, and we expect to be funded for the final ninety-one million of that authority. And money is paid to the district accounts by first week of July. If you have to answer any questions.
And that would be the end of the measure you funded?
That's correct.
Ninety-one million?
Yes, sir.
All right. And this is a good time to sell bonds because we see interest rates on the rise?
Interest rates could always rise or fall. I won't make long-term projections, but interest rates are very low right now, so.
Very good. Other questions from the board?
Housing prices are up as well.
Very, very much. Comments from the public? Or the wishes of the board?
Chairman, I move we approve Resolution 2021-37.
Thank you, Mr. Navah, for your motion. Thank you, Mr. Connectset, for your second. We'll go ahead and call for the vote.
Freitas is left here with the people.
Huh? Huh?
Hello over there.
Huh? Are you going to vote? Three, yeah, yeah. Trash. Item OAI four passes seven zero. Trust me, there's eight of them. There's plenty of these that are worth a go around, so. On Item OAI five, Ratification of the Memorandum of Understanding with the Lodi Unified Supervisory Group. Mr. McIllegan?
Yes, Mr. President. This is an agreement that we reached with the Lodi Unified Supervisory Group on MOU for their approval.
Very nice. And thank you, Mr. McIllegan. Thank you, staff. And congratulations, Lodi Unified Supervisory Group. Wishes of the board?
Motion approved.
Thank you, Mr. Everly, for your motion. Thank you, Vice President McFarland, for your second. Any comments from the public? No comments, so we'll go ahead and call for the vote. And Item OAI five carries seven zero. Congratulations again, Supervisory Group. Item OAI six, Ratification to the Addendum to the Tendent Agreement with the Lodi Unified Supervisory Group. Seems like deja vu all over again. Thank you, Mr. Neely, for your motion. Thank you, Vice President McFarland, for your second. Any comments from, other comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Call for the vote. And Item OAI six passes seven zero. Item OAI seven, Ratification of the Addendum to Impact Effects Agreement with the Lodi Pupil Personnel Association. Comments from the board? Comments from the public? I'm sure Dean Blount is on the line. Is looking to say something? No?
Motion approved.
All right, thank you, Mr. Everly, for your motion. Thank you, Mr. Neely, for your second. Call for the vote. And Item OAI seven passes seven zero. Congratulations, LPPA. Also, Item OAI eight, Proposed Administrative Services Agreement for the Employee Assistance Program. Mr. Khan?
Thank you, President Freitas, members of the board. Dr. Washer, the board has, on a previous occasion, had interest in offering all employees an Employee Assistance Program. This is an insurance program that will pay for mental health, discussions between a provider and the employee, substance abuse assistance, that type of thing. This proposed administrative services agreement was vetted by representatives of all the board's bargaining units. This is the exact one that all agreed would be the best for them. This plan will cost approximately a dollar thirty-seven per employee per month. Depending on the census count, not depending on census count, it'll cost the board less than sixty thousand a year. Depending on the census count, it might be below fifty-five thousand per year in total. For seven assessment and referral sessions per employee, but also each employee, each member of the employee's house also gets seven as well.
Very nice. Thank you, Mr. Khan. And thank you, everyone, and for all the groups in putting this together and working this out. This was suggested by our employees, and the board has given direction and is procuring this out.
Chairman, I move we approve the CSEA OAI eight.
Thank you, Mr. Navah, for your motion. Other comments from the board?
Yes, I have questions. Thank you, Mr. Freitas. This is an awesome step that we're doing. Will they be getting, how is information getting out to the employees?
We'll use both the provider to assist with that, but we have various means of-
Car and then carry with them?
I'm not sure, but the program will be going July first, so one side will get back with the provider.
All right, thank you.
And you have a second, Mr. Porter?
Yes, I second.
Thank you, Mr. Porter, for your second. Other comments from the board? Other comments from the public? Go ahead and call for the vote. And Item OAI eight passes seven zero. And Mr. Khan, you give us more information about the rollout in July first?
Absolutely.
And Dr. Washer, harp that superintendent vote. Very nice. That concludes the other action items. Moving on with personnel matters. Mr. McIllegan?
Mr. President, routine personnel matters are presented for your consideration.
Chairman, I move we approve personnel matters.
Thank you, Mr. Navah. Thank you, Mr. Porter, for your motion. Thank you, Mr. Porter, for your second. Other comments from the board? Other comments from the public? Students do not vote or comment. Go ahead and call for the vote. And Personnel Matters pass seven zero. Communications from Employee Groups. Mrs. Armstrong, which of our employee groups would like to communicate with us tonight?
Tonight we have Dean Blount.
See, I'm a little clairvoyant myself what's going on. Connectset isn't the only one, so. Very good. All right. Hi Dean.
There we go. Still trying to get this computer thing working right.
Well, you want to-
Dr. Washer, members of the board. Yeah, I was waiting in the wings and during your OAI measures, like I was, I heard my name come across. I knew I should be ready for it.
Good.
First, I want to thank you guys for ratifying the VA's most recent MOU. Our members appreciate your collaboration, and I never imagined a year with so many changes and so many challenges, much less four MOUs in a year, so. It's been a collaborative process, and we thank you very much for this most recent approval. Optum will be focused on our struggles. I do this as well, but I'd also like to acknowledge our accomplishments. And tonight you approved an Employee Assistance Program by Optum. I participated on the committee that explored these programs and welcomed the service for our employees, especially following this very challenging year. We have been negotiating with the district on alternative agreement. We've made some good progress, and I want to thanks, put some thanks out to Mr. McIllegan, Mrs. Jager, and special thanks to Mrs. McFarland for attending our negotiations. We're still working on language to address our speech and language pathologies, caseloads. We're asking for language that would support the intent and spirit of educational code by keeping caseloads in an average that is low enough to allow our SLPs to be able to provide effective services to their students and to afford the district flexibility in average caseload numbers. We feel that our proposed language meets your directive in your final decision to address a history of overloaded SLP caseloads. So I'm looking forward to coming back to the negotiating table on this coming Friday. I know a couple of meetings ago, I approached the board and spoke about a scholarship that LPPA puts out for our high school students who are looking into fields that are related to what LPPA members do. At that first one, we only had one applicant. And since that time, I also reported we had, by extending some time, we had nine members, or nine students apply for that. And we have a winner. Actually, we typically give two scholarships, and this year we have decided, based on the applicant pool, to award three winners. And those awards will be going out tomorrow evening. So we're really excited to announce that. Thank you very much for your time and have a wonderful evening. I can't believe it's only nine oh eight.
I can't either, Dean.
Yeah, I can't either, Dean. Thank you so much, Tina. Thanks for the wonderful report. And thank you for awarding those three scholarships to our kids. That's very much appreciated. Other employee groups? No other employee groups tonight, so. All right, comments from board members?
Mr. Freitas, I just have two comments.
Yes, Mr. Navah.
I just want to acknowledge that you, Mr. Paul Quess, Dr. Washer, attended two graduations this last week. The first one was Little College.
Yes.
And there, little glitches with the wind and all that kind of stuff, but it was a nice pleasant ceremony. A lot of scholars in that area. Then the other one was the adult education, which was something exciting for me because you seldom get people that are adults graduating from high school. And this was a real pleasant experience for me because there are some people there that have tremendous goals with their diploma and continuing their education. Well, again, there were about seventeen graduates at that graduation. So I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Yes, that was very exciting. They also livestreamed it, I believe, through the radio, so families could be in their cars hearing that. And there was actually almost seventy graduates, seventeen of whom chose to walk. And just fantastic stories of that. But great job, Julie, Mark, and everyone over there at Tran, over at Lodi Adult School. Great, thank you, Miss Donovan, for bringing it up. Other comments from the board? Mr. Connectset?
I just wanted to mention that we won one. We got homeless camp cleaned up. We got a homeless camp cleaned up behind Creekside School, and I have to think that a lot of that had to do with talking with the Scott did.
Two plus two.
Two plus two. And then I even saw the mayor, and I asked him, and I said, Chris McCollum, before I have to, so... Anyway, we won one. It looks really good now.
Very nice. Thank you, Mr. Connectset. Other comments from the Board? Mr. Neely?
Sir. Thank you. I would like for us to take a look at the question about masks. I understand why we're following, state or the county, and I get that. I'd like the Board to have a little bit of discussion on whether we believe that that is the right path for one reason. And if we think it's not, and I've been in some classrooms, and they're awfully cumbersome, and I'd really rather the kids not do it if they don't have to, and I think the way we handle vaccination, I think the cleaning, I think the risks are minimal. I'd like to take a look at that. Possibly, we could do a resolution asking our legislators to reverse that ban. I'm not saying that we want to go against it. I'm not proposing that. But maybe we can start putting some pressure on to start getting this thing changed, and being on the legislative committee, if we can get that resolution passed, I would be happy to meet with our legislators in person and deliver that with or without masks. Mr. Neely, I would say...
Very nice. Thank you. I would just say thank, I wouldn't rush you. It's 9:15.
Graduation. Are we looking into getting as many parents and family there? I'm sure you are. I would just like a little bit of information on that. Can we put up extra seats on the field somewhere? Is there something we can do to open this up just as much as possible and expand the number of tickets that we can give away? Done. Now I'm going to move back. Last week, I talked to you about the achievement gap between Title I and non-Title I schools. I also told you I was going to be talking about that every meeting from here on out, and here I am. I'm going to talk about it again. From that Board meeting, a gentleman, his name is Bruce Roberson. He is with the Education Committee for the NAACP, contacted me, and we set up a Zoom meeting that we had today. Mr. Roberson is one of the few people I've seen that are as passionate about helping the privileged kids as myself. This man is phenomenal. He's retired from Silicon Valley. He's a retired teacher. After that, he's got just tons of experience, and he is, he's invited me to a meeting tomorrow morning with the county office that works with various groups, so it's that whole community school thing that I'm going to... Are you going to... Would you attend that meeting? Okay. I'll fill you in on it later. So he has got some great connections, and we really need, this is the type of thing we need to start fostering, this type of connection outside of Lodi Unified, to see what we can do to bring resources back into our kids to help with that achievement gap. He also told me that there was a lawsuit that's eight schools in San Joaquin County got grant money from the state. He told me that one of them is Victor School, our school, Victor. You know about that? Yeah. So are they currently getting that money, or does that start?
Is that the early literacy money? Is that for early literacy?
Yes, yes. So are we already using that?
They have a plan in place, and we're supposed to be getting the funds. I don't know if Mr. McGregor has an update, and we can bring it to the Board.
Just to tell us a lot, just to, you know, quick, effective email might be good, I don't know. It's, what I understand, $700,000 a year for three years.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Neely. Yes, Allison Garrity, the principal of Victor, is working. She's got some things in place. She's got some personnel adjustments, bringing in a little more staff to work with the children. She's very exciting, and I can prepare an exact report for you if you'd like.
That would be great. I'd love to find out more about that because if it works at Victor, we'll export it to the other schools, maybe. So, yeah, let's work on that. So, anyway, I think there's going to be some good things coming up about this. I'm really excited about getting through all of the contracts and things that we've got to get done here, and getting on to using that money to help our kids and maybe bridge some of that achievement gap and mitigate some of the damages that have been done to their education before. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neely. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. I also, I, that's a great idea about the mask resolution to help our state legislators come to the realization that it's unhealthy for our kids, in my opinion, but they can, I like the idea where it's optional, and I think that sometimes they're a little slow to the uptake. They're waiting for input, so let's give them some input. Why not? And I would appreciate that as quickly as possible, like the next board meeting, I think would be great. And if it works, it works. If we voted down, we voted down, but at least we could try. I did want to take this opportunity to congratulate our high school seniors who will be graduating. We won't have a chance to say much to them at the ceremonies, and I'll be kind of interested to see how and if there's a huge change from previous graduations. It's going to be different. But one of the things that I thought was noteworthy is I had an opportunity to talk to several high school seniors from two different high schools, and the, one of the questions that was posed by the district to the students of our district was, would you prefer two separate graduations so more people could come, or would you like to have one graduation? And overwhelmingly, they said, we want one graduation. And it's interesting that one of the kids says, we have been apart all year long. We want to end it together. And I thought that was great. Not only that they were asked, but that we followed through with. A real heartfelt opinion of theirs is that they want this to be a special day for them. So congratulations, high school seniors. I'm looking forward to the graduations. They are actually quite enjoyable, and good luck in your futures.
Very nice. Thank you, Mr. Everly. Thank you, Board members, for all of your excellent comments. Thank you, everyone who spoke tonight. Dan is helping setting up the vaccination clinic out of McNair. Just awesome. That was fantastic. Walking Clinic, one of the secrets, I think, for us not wearing these masks, just getting everyone vaccinated, and just a little bit that we've seen in the change, that's, getting everyone vaccinated just makes a huge change. I was there at McNair, and Dad was there with his daughter, because if you're under age 18, you had to have parental consent, and I said, great job, Andy. He says, I'm the last one in my family, and I haven't gotten vaccinated. I said, well, can't be any easier, and he got back in line, and lived through it, got vaccinated. So little by little, real great stories over there. Also, I thank you Assemblymember Bill Pugwa. I know you and your staff are also working to set up a second vaccination clinic here in Lodi, so that is going to be a walking clinic. We're working with county mental health. Details to follow. I'm very excited about that. And Memorial Day, you know? What can you say? You know, sub gave all. And, you know, God bless them, and thank you, everyone, for honoring. So those are, any other comments from the Board? None? Okay. Further comments from the Superintendent?
No further comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Washer. Board Advisory Committee reports. I got to tell you, this thing wrapping up, you know, before 11 o'clock at night...
It's going to take longer if we keep doing that.
We're going to do it ourselves, right? This is too early, so... All right. All right. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.